Okay.
We're starting.
Twenty seven.
Yeah.
Go on.
All right, meeting called ever. Who is to reply?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Herzak.
Here.
Mayor McFetrich.
Here. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August eighth meeting.
Second.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August nineteenth meeting?
Motion.
Is that second? Is this the second meeting?
Yes.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
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 No abstention? All right, motion carries. Presentation, petitions, communications, and general questions for members of the committee. As we have no one present, we'll dispense with that. Report from the code enforcement officer. I did not get that. Did you hear anything, Mary or Juanita?
No.
No.
He actually mentioned it to me and then I think forgot to send it. So to the board, I will get that for you. Stick it in your boxes or email it to you. My report. As summer winds down, I look back and I'm happy that we had several successful community events. Three concerts in the park, the weekly farmer's market, the village fest, the children's garden club, the senior scholars program. And I would like to offer personal thanks to several individuals and businesses. Thank you to stewards for supplying the ice cream for our ice cream social and to the community groups who attended. Champlin Fire Department, Champlin Moore's EMS, Champlin Library, Clinton County Health Department, and the Living Water Baptist Church. Thanks to Nikki Malinsky for organizing all the kids' activities over the summer. Thanks to our farmer's market vendors, Jim Rabidu, Sula Fave, and
John Downs.
John Downs. I want to make sure it was John, I had the Downs right. A shout out to the DPW crew who always has things set up for these events and to Mary Juanita for their help in making sure that all the details are taken care of. It's just so nice to be able to gather again among our family and friends. The upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant have begun or are beginning very soon. This project will take many months. The UV disinfection system is a New York State requirement and will be completed in the spring. The other part of the project will bring important changes to this plant, which hasn't seen upgrades in several decades, I believe. I hope that everyone has an enjoyable fall season with plenty of time spent outdoors in our beautiful area. As always, if you have concerns or ideas regarding our village, please reach out to me. My door is always open. Thank you all so much. A report from the trustees. Joel?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Chuck?
A few weeks ago, there was a water issue in the town. And that may be discussed a little later, but things were resolved eventually and hopefully they stay that way. And there's another issue about people getting water from the hydrants that'll be discussed maybe also.
Yes, yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Nikki?
Okay, so our garden club happened this summer. We didn't have a whole lot of time to get out there due to the weather. It was really wet for a while. We did start late. But what we did grow in the two garden boxes did pretty well. We had an event in August where the children were able to create a salad using the vegetables that we grew, so. And then a couple other vegetables that were from the tower up at the Renda's house. So we did, we added it all together. Kids chopped it all up and threw it together in a bowl and then we enjoyed it together. It was nice. We are going to try to meet every six weeks throughout the winter and plan for next year and plan to do it early. Probably end of May, June, yeah, probably end of May.
Yeah.
Get it in there. Hopefully we can get those pumpkins in. And see if we can get some speakers or someone who's more experienced in gardening or different areas of outdoor learning. And we will set that up soon. Our next date would be October ninth at ten. And if the weather's nice, we'll meet at the garden. If not, we'll be at the meeting house. The library is going to begin a weekly story hour on October first, so every Saturday from ten to eleven. And we did not win the grant that I applied for, but there are more opportunities, so that will also be part of the garden club project. So if there's anyone who is good at writing grants, seven mile away, I could use a little help. I mean, that, yes and no.
Did Amy do, did Amy do one one year?
She did not get the, Nikki, I believe, was talking about the kids' garden grants.
Yeah, kids' garden thing.
Amy was also not able to get those grants.
The pollination, whatever, yeah.
Yeah. This is the second one I've tried.
Very, very competitive.
Yeah. Let's not say, I thought she had.
Yeah. Yes, she did.
I don't, I don't have any experience writing grants, but I can write, so if you want to send me like what it is and then
brief explanation and then
Yeah, I can look that up.
Yeah. That'd be great. Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
Truck or treat? Should we just announce that now?
Uh, yes. So we'll set the trunk or treat for Saturday, October twenty second at two.
Right? Wait, twenty ninth?
Twenty, sorry, twenty ninth. Oh, the wrong one? Yes.
At two.
At two, so October twenty ninth at two.
Great.
And that'll be at the playground.
Yep. Is that it?
And, yes, so that is it.
Thank you, Nikki. Kim?
Okay, so water board. I'm still waiting on some information to start on the report. I need the hydrant flushing information. I don't know if someone, I sent Mike an email today not realizing that he wasn't in the office, so I don't know if I can get the information from someone else, but I do need that. I did receive the town EDU report and in speaking with the supervisor, the town does need to approve that as that report that they do does reflect their billing, so they do have to approve that. It's not that it has to be approved to come to us. But I will get a summary, an email summary of the information rather than all of the information that I got. And we are having a signing party on September twenty eighth, hopefully in order to meet our October first deadline.
Okay, great. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. And as for the trunk or treat, I can let the Catholic daughters and the Knights of Columbus know.
Oh, excellent.
I'll give them the date and time.
Okay.
Just looking for that, so.
Good.
That's it.
And more to the merrier.
Oh, yes.
A report from the clerk treasurer?
Everyone has their expense and revenue reports for August. And we do have a couple things in the negative which we have to do transfers for.
Yeah, we want to do those transfers first.
Sure. Plus, we have one that we need to do for our abstract about this. So the transfers from A thirteen twenty five point two clerk contractual, a hundred dollars, from A thirteen twenty five point eleven clerk treasurer, our clerk schooling, a hundred dollars, to A fourteen twenty point one law personal services, a thousand dollars, from A seventy one ten point four parks contractual, a thousand dollars, to F fourteen twenty point one law personal services, four hundred dollars, from F eighty three eighty nine point four water other expenses, four hundred dollars, to G fourteen twenty point one law personal services, six hundred dollars, from G eighty one thirty point four sewage and treatment disposal contractual.
You have a motion for those transfers?
So more.
And a second? Any questions on any of those? Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
The abstract, we have additional invoices of four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and the by cents for a total abstract of twenty six thousand nine twenty twelve.
May I have a motion to approve the abstract, the one? So, a second?
Second.
Questions?
I have one. Why, why are we getting the funds for someone whose retirement is short?
Well, I mean, they're budgeted by the year.
Okay.
Curious.
So I don't know if we have any written policy about that, probably not.
Okay.
Just says that's what their allotment is.
That's the allotment per year, so.
Yeah, annual allowance, so. New year start, June first.
That's true. Yeah. Any other questions? No? All right, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
All right, a report from the superintendent. Since he was not able to be here tonight, there's, I do not have a report from him, but of course, as usual, they have been super busy. So if I get one later, I will just email it to you. Correspondence?
Correspondence from Stafford and Owens regarding Doug Powers. Correspondence from Mayor McFetrich to AARP regarding age-friendly communities. Offer of land donation at one oh two Church Street. Request from Universal Interiors on the cost to hook up to water supply. Correspondence from town supervisor Trombley regarding water theft at hydrants.
And then I also threw in the generator exchange for the paving services to happen next, next spring and summer. All right, under new business, we'll start with the water theft and the hydrants. That was in the correspondence and Chuck also brought it up briefly in his report. Basically, what has happened, I don't really know how often, is that businesses that need water for hydro seeding or whatever have been taking water out of hydrants. This is completely against our code and the town's. I mean, it's basically a theft of, of water. So the town supervisor wrote us a letter. He's got a couple of suggestions. I'm sure you read it. I'll just summarize it for the public. He is suggesting that these businesses either use the river. The town and the village both have both ramps that they could access the river. Or that they use the wastewater treatment plant where they would have access to water, but if that is done, it would need to be metered. And then as far as I'm concerned, it would require personnel. We need a way to bill it. And I think we would have to have a way to set up appointments. I don't think people should be allowed to just come in and say, I'm here for water, drop what you're doing, I need it.
I agree.
So those are the factors that I see. Joel, do you have a question?
So this is just to get water from the lines? I don't understand.
So if you have a company that needs a big container of water for your business, they have been going to a hydrant and have one of those keys or whatever you call those things that open hydrants and taking, just taking it for their business. So we're saying, no, you can't do that. And the town is saying, you can't do that. But then we need, to allow them to get water at a price, we need to set up something.
And it's, it's not only the just taking the water, there could be a backflow issue of what's in the tank could backflow into our water system.
Bacteria.
Yeah, so contamination.
Yeah, it could, could create a problem.
And as, as the supervisor noted appropriately, they don't really have any way that they can do this because they only have hydrants. We are the ones that have access to meters and we have the plant and we have the wastewater plant and we would be able to sell water from something in our village. They would have to have some go to particular hydrant and meter it and meet them. It just wouldn't really work the way they're set up.
Right. If they go to the river, there's, there potentially could be some issues there. They're limited to the amount of water they, they can take in time.
Yes.
And also if it's for recreation and if somebody wants to be putting a boat in here, you got something backed in there wanting to, or getting water, that's gonna, you know, deter people from using that boat, boat launch.
Not to mention the turbidity that it could cause if something were to go wrong with their pump and it's now going the opposite direction and they've stirred up everything there. That could create other problems that, you know, people want to deal with.
Yeah.
But I think that's a good idea that they, they should schedule this with the village, not just
Show up.
show up at the wastewater plant and say, I want water.
I think it has to be scheduled. We don't have a big enough crew to just respond every time someone shows up.
That's right.
And then we would have to, I would assume we would just sell it at the cost that we would sell water normally. And then we would have to meter it.
Do you have any idea how many people are looking for water in that amount, in that bulk?
Well, I really only know of one company, but maybe there, maybe there are others.
Maybe there's others, we don't know.
Yeah, we're only aware of one right now.
Yeah.
Right, and that was found by mistake this recent time.
Yeah. So the recommendation from the board would be the four points I mentioned. It would have to be metered, you know, we, we would need our personnel, we'd need a way to bill, and it would have to be scheduled.
We have the capability of taking credit cards, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, well, not for that kind of thing. Only for your water, your water bills.
Or taxes.
Water some, water bills and tax.
Yeah.
So how would we do that, Mary?
I, I would, I would be a little worried about billing now we're waiting for it.
Yeah. How would we create a
We'd do like, we would do
Just create an invoice if I could do, I mean, we do like
For slides, like we're doing for slides.
When the fire department used that meter to, to, when they were clearing out St. Mary's and they were cleaning it all up and we assessed it as new water.
That's right.
We put a meter on the hydrant and it continued on and on and we metered it and then we sent a bill to them, an invoice.
So it's really an invoice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Than our, our quarterly bills?
Right, it's not gonna be the same way as the
Okay.
Well, it wouldn't be in our quarterly bills. We would just fill it as they use it.
Yeah.
Although, my understanding is that it would be less than a thousand gallons that would go into those things. And we bill by a thousand.
So maybe, maybe that's gonna be our minimum bill.
So it would have to be accumulation. We could have nine, minute, minimum bill. I would say if we're gonna, if we're gonna go to all the hassle of having to have our people be available to do this.
Have a minimum charge.
Have a minimum charge.
Yeah.
It is kind of an inconvenience.
Yeah, and I
But, but anyway.
But we have to do something. We can't let people just have access to it.
Yeah, yeah.
No, because at some point, we're gonna end up with a serious problem.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
With a bacterial problem that none of us are gonna wanna deal with.
Anything else on that point? Okay.
Before we go into old business, I forgot, I forgot the one bill for Barton and Judas.
Oh, okay.
It's for the wastewater treatment plant disinfectant improvement. The bill is ten thousand four twenty two fifty.
They have a motion to approve the payment of this bill. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Just don't want to forget it.
Yeah, yeah, I thought of it and then I forgot. Added to the agenda is, I was asked if we would approve a proclamation. Thank you, God.
Yep.
Is this a fine line?
Yeah.
Oh goodness, there it is. I was asked by the Champlin Valley Family Center for Drug Treatment and Youth Services to pass this proclamation, so I'm going to read it. "Mental health and substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide with commitment and support. Those impacted can embark on a journey of improved health and overall wellness. The focus of Recovery Month each September is to celebrate all people that make the journey of recovery possible by embracing the tagline, 'Recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community.' Recovery Month spreads the message that people can and do recover every day. The impact of mental health and substance use disorders is apparent in our local community. According to the National Institute of Mental Health, twenty-five thousand six hundred twenty-four adults and up to fourteen thousand nine hundred twenty-four youth under eighteen have co-occurring mental health, substance use disorders in Clinton, Franklin, and Essex Counties. Through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health and substance use disorders. Recovery Month encourages people in need of recovery services to seek help. Managing the effects of these conditions helps individuals achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. The Recovery Month of servants continues to work to improve the lives of those affected by mental health and substance use disorders by raising awareness and educating communities about the effective services that are available." So I'd like a motion to approve this, please. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I will sign this and send this to them. It's such an important, such an important part of our community and our whole nation. Okay, old business. Dog control, we tabled that last, we tabled that last month and did Jody stop in?
Yes, yes, he did.
I noticed cards on my desk.
Yes, he came today. He was here last week too. We have on our website now, we have a link under dog control where people can go on there and make a report of a nuisance animal. And it will be emailed directly to him.
Oh, nice.
So he'll get it right, right away.
Great.
At his own email. So that, that's linked right to the town. Actually, it, it, it is at the town is where that link is, but our, ours links directly to the town.
Excellent, okay. So to the community, if you, if you have a complaint, I'll use that service. And to the board members, I'll give you each a card before you leave. One of those cards, 'cause you love several. DEC cleanup update. So basically, I'm just going to tell you what we have done thus far. Tiffany, who was our insurance agent at Northern, called Andrew Coster, the man that wrote the letter to us originally from the AG's office, explaining our situation that, of course, the insurance we currently have does not cover something that was back in twenty seventeen. So she explained that all to him. She suggested that we file a claim with our previous insurance company, which Mary did. It was submitted, it did go through, and I, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I just got an email that they received it and they're reviewing it now.
Okay, so, so we did do that. Mary, thanks again for doing that. I sent the name of our lawyer to the AG's representative and I emailed our lawyer, Tom Renee, to tell him what we have done thus far. So that's where we are. I don't really know much more, but we're taking little steps. Waste, water and wastewater treatment plant operator. So I would like a motion to go out of our regular session, please. Some stuff.
Aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and a motion to go into executive session.
So more.
And a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, so let's just go into executive session and discuss this a little bit. Reason, I guess, would be personal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and a motion to go back into the regular session.
So more.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. No decisions were made. All right, let's see. Subdivision of village property, very interesting situation. After all of the research and contact and look, reading about the planning board, Mary somehow came across a letter that was written probably twelve years ago or so that said, FEMA buyout land can never be sold, can never be sold.
Except to another government.
Yeah, but can't, basically can't, can't be sold. So that's a done deal. We cannot subdivide that little piece for that driveway. That's FEMA buyout.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't know that, and now I do, and I confirmed it with Glenn Cutter at the planning department of the county to make sure everything that was in that letter, which was very clear, was correct and it's still in effect, and he said, yes, it, it cannot be sold. So it's done. So I wrote a letter to the person who owned it and said, I'm sorry, our hands are tied, we cannot sell that.
The interesting thing is that twelve years ago, it was the same person?
Yeah, but I mean, people, it may be, it's easy to forget the reasoning or, you know, or maybe not even understand or, I, you know, I don't know.
But I thought that it was interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a good thing that you looked into it because, oh boy, could you imagine?
Well, this was like the letter fairy dropped it in this file. I don't even know.
That was.
Because Mary was looking for the deed for that property.
I was looking Oh, wow. To subdivide, you should have a copy of the deed showing that you own it. And I went through the flood files.
And you just happened to find it.
And I pulled, I pulled up and it was on the top. It was on the top of that file. This is, it was two thousand ten. The paper, paper fairy dropped it there, for sure. Yeah, because the next one under it was the one that, that, the insurance, flood insurance notification that we received for village residents when the, they, they increased the flood zone and people would need to get flood insurance. That was from two thousand twenty-two and that was on top of it.
Oh, wow. That's kind of your
It was just meant to be found.
Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah.
Well, thank God it was found.
It avoided a lot of work.
It was, it was just crazy how it just appeared.
Oh, yeah. And paid the work to, to find, we would have found it out eventually if we had presented that to the county that there was a subdivision and say, oh, they would have said, no. Right. But just say
It saved us a ton of time though, you know, a planning board meeting and probably legal fees and and now, now I know. I, I didn't know that, so now, now I know. So that is that. Any other business to discuss?
Did you want to talk about, you had Oh, no, never mind.
Did I miss it?
Nope, you did not. I was looking at something else.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
I, I just had one question. It was about the, the, the water pipe or the, excuse me, the water hydrants that we talked about earlier. This, the, the question is whether or not the village would be accepting of townwide people needing water from the hydrants? That's what it sounds like in the
Anybody, it's about, anybody that needs water should be coming to the board, coming to the village and saying, can we hook up to your hydrant?
To purchase water.
To purchase water.
Purchase water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone in the town, anywhere from around the world, or just, just
I suppose it could be anyone.
Anybody who wishes, could be anybody who wishes to purchase.
We would reserve the right to say no. If someone said they're going to go fill, you know, fifteen swimming pools or something with village water, treated water, I mean, we might have second thoughts about that.
Yeah, but we need to know if someone wishes to do, to get water from a hydrant or something.
Yeah, 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 that makes sense. I mean, you schedule an appointment to go to the doctors, you schedule an appointment to get
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do anything.
Ten thousand gallons of water.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
No. I guess a little ahead of things, but I guess we'll head of things, but if. Individuals or this one individual continues to take it from a hydrant. And. I know there's, there can be a fine. I'm not sure what that is. The town was looking into that.
Mm-hmm.
The town was waiting for response from court.
I mean, that happens.
So. But I mean, there, there has to be. Something that's gonna really deter these people from doing this. You know, first occurrence, second occurrence, more, you know.
Well, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
To what you're saying, I mean, it's presumably if we set up a system where people can get it on the up. Then, you know, we understand that either they're no longer buying water. Because they're getting it from somewhere else, or they're no longer getting water anymore. So if we have a record of how much is being bought, then if we see. That makes sense.
Yeah. I'd have to look at our code to see if there are fines attached. I mean, it's in the code already about theft of water.
Yeah, there is.
It's got a fine.
There's a fine amount.
It, it can be up to no more than two hundred dollar fine.
That's not, to, to me, that's not enough.
On the occurrence.
That's not enough.
I agree.
To take the chance of, to take the chance of damaging our water supply.
Mm-hmm.
And damaging was the only word, they could contaminate our water supply.
Yeah, contaminate.
Yeah, but, and, and I'll, I mean. What happens when there's a, where there's a structure fire right from there and the fire department needs to come and use the fire hydrant, it's being sucked of water from. Whatever, I mean, I think, or the chance of that happening, but still.
Well, we can talk about increasing the fine.
But they're, they, the fire department, their tanks and their trucks. They don't have stuff in it, like, you know, with their hydro seeding or some, or some kind of fertilizers or whatever.
Right.
There's.
They don't have that in their trucks, it's, it's just clean water.
No, well, I think he's talking about it.
I'm just saying if it needs to be, that fire hydrant needs to be used or someone else using it illegally.
Oh, I see, oh, okay.
And that's a problem, um, and it's just, just off the start.
Well, yeah.
You just.
They'll be kicked off real quickly.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, definitely.
You better believe that.
But I do, I do think that our fine. Two hundred dollars is no more than a. Stock in the hand.
Yeah.
And that's just, to me, that's nothing compared to what could potentially happen to our water supply.
And the cost.
It's just, yeah, it's just not, it's just not worth it.
So we should talk about increasing the fine on that?
Yes.
Um, I would, I would say that um. Maybe get in line with what, what the town is instructed from court.
Mm-hmm.
So by, by Judge Trump.
Okay. All right.
And I wanna say, I thought that one was up around possibly fifteen hundred.
Wow, okay.
Don't hold me, but I.
I heard a thousand, but I don't, it wasn't, it was just a guess.
Right, because I don't think that. He had gotten official words yet as to what it was gonna be, I think.
That was, that was a first occurrence.
Was still wait.
Okay.
And it should increase.
We had said that it was found accidentally?
Someone just came upon them, they're in a hydrant.
So. How, how, I'm not even asked that question, but how, what would be the way of knowing or monitoring the fact of whether or not hydrants are being used, you said metered? They'd have to be metered?
Well, if someone does something like that, there's no meter on it.
When they want to use them.
Yeah.
If they've got the tools, open it, they can go.
Yeah, because a hydrant, it's just open.
If it was in dark of night or unseen place.
Yeah. So there, would, would there be any way? To meter them so it would be known if someone were taking the water out of it?
No, we can't meter every hydrant, and they're not really taking a lot of water.
No, no.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't notice that there was a huge loss of water.
No.
Because it's not over time.
No, but over once, for a time.
That accumulates.
And it does accumulate, oh, absolutely.
And they're, and they're, as Nikki was just saying, you know, as the water board looks at these, uh, lost water.
Lost water. Where's, you know.
Where's it going?
I know.
There's a contributing factor.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, but you can't meter every hydrant. And there are some that are so remote, you wouldn't see anyone there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So hopefully, they'll be above board now.
If not. The fines should just be increases.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I agree. Okay, I'll wait to hear from the town what the judge says. Sounds good, everyone. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So?
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.